Sunday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen for seven P. M. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great power of our Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Charles Whistletail. Tim Isakowski.
Here.
Beth Engel.
Here.
Sharon Stoltner, here. Heidi Campbell.
Here.
Andrew Boullet.
Here.
Michael Baronowski.
Here.
Mr. President, here at the corner.
Thank you. Mr. Stricker, recognitions and presentations.
First of all, this speaks very well for our school district. The direction I feel like we're heading that, we have a full boardroom of people this evening to primarily to recognize some students for a high honor. And so, I'm very proud of that, I'm very proud of those students. I talk often, especially going to the seven-twelfth building, I talk often about example and how important example is, especially with older students, especially athletes. Athletes, whether they want to or not, are held accountable to, there's a poem called, "The Little Eyes Are Upon You," because the younger students are watching you, whether you want it or not. And what a fine example that we have this evening, that not only do we have good examples of student-athletes, but student-athletes have put academics first. While the competition and the sports are important, and I'm the biggest competitor ever when it comes to athletics, but that they have their right priorities and certainly the classroom comes first. So, with that, I'd like to introduce our athletic director, Mitch Landrum. He'll talk a little bit about our all-state academic football team. And then we have some medals for them. So, Mitch.
For the honor of academic first-team all-states, only the top four teams with GPA earn this honor. And we were among some pretty good teams that were in Division Five. There were only two teams, actually one team that was a public school that was ranked above us, and there were two private schools. And we were only point-four, point-zero-four away from being the top public school in the state as far as academics are concerned. With football, it takes the top eleven GPAs from each team, and our team ended up with a three-point-eight-three-five overall GPA, beating out teams like Almont, Marine City, Marysville, and even some schools like University of Liggett, Cranbrook, Kingswood, and larger schools like Anchor Bay, Chippewa Valley, and Utica Schools as well. So, our boys work in the classroom. It's definitely, definitely worth the work that Coach Barnhart put through to make sure these boys got honored in the way that they should. And I'll turn it over to him to recognize the boys.
Thanks. Not taking any credit, I didn't write one test or write one paper, but these boys did, and I couldn't be more proud of them. We, I never came in telling you we were gonna build a house of cards and try and win games right away. We were trying to win games right away, but we were trying to do it the right way. And so, not just trying to build a solid foundation, we're trying to build a foundation that lasts here for a long, long time, long after I've left. When we get to the end of this thing and we start doing the finish work on this house, it's gonna be, it's gonna be beautiful. And we're gonna do some great things with that. But we can't do that if we haven't built the foundation the correct way. So, our attendance has been fantastic, our offseason preparation's been fantastic, and these kids in the classroom have certainly done the job as well. So, we had spoken to the top students in our program, spoken to all of our students in our program. The top students are here, and they do choose the top eleven. There were several, there's only three seniors in this group. There were several underclassmen that were right on their heels. And so, what we like to think about is down the road now being a perennial repeater of this award. So, without any further ado here, it looks like you've got the names right there. The top eleven were, and I'll do this in order, we had one that was a perfect four-point-oh.
You guys come up and shake it.
Get your award and shake everybody's hand. The top eleven were, we had one that was four-point-oh. The state doesn't recognize IB the way that we do as far as the GPA. So, we have to have those kids really overachieve because they're on a different scale. So, we had one perfect four-point-oh, Ryan Mulberg.
Congratulations, Ryan.
Thank you. Great job. Congratulations.
We had a slew of kids with a three-nine, Blake Nabachek.
Congratulations, Blake.
Please. Steven Goodall.
Congratulations.
Taking the biggest hit on that IB thing, he was actually above a four-point-oh, but because it's not recognized, we can't read it that way. But Michael Burnier. I saw Mason Ruman come in. Garrett Sparker. Brandon Spencer. Tom Goldenbogan. Nick Tadino. Tom Brad. And Garrett Rill.
You guys, why don't you come on here? Why don't we do a picture with the board?
Okay. It's such a big group of people.
Let them get in front of us.
They can't see you back there. Get in it. Wait a second, Coach. Get the board in there. Can you get it broad enough?
Good job, man.
I think we'll leave it there, Mike. Yeah, we're gonna do one more recognition, and I know that there's a fundraising volleyball game tonight. So, real quick, one more recognition. And I appreciate the students staying, and that is to recognize the Board of Education. Because when I was a student, I really didn't, I didn't even know really what the board did. I mean, my dad's a principal, that's why I kinda knew that, you know, what Board of Education did. And I tell you, and it's good for the students to see this, and that is this group of people here. It's not a big salary position or anything like that, no one's getting rich from it, and it's community service. Community service used to be recognized in high esteem, I believe. And now, I believe it's almost, it's become very challenging because it's under constant scrutiny. And so, we have a group of board members that are not here with personal agendas. Again, always make sure, yeah, do they have certain passions in certain areas? Yeah. Who does? Just like your parents, you're passionate about your children, and if there's something that happens to a program, your children, and certainly you get a little passion about it. I have two children the same way, so they have passions. But it's a core love for these students of our community. And so, I just wanna take a second to recognize the Board of Education. So, if you, you wanna sit down so I can just pass these out to you, you wanna come up and do a handshake? Come around, so, all right. Our board president, Andrew Goullet.
Now, these stars, when I go into the elementary school, the little kids go nuts over these, so I want the same enthusiasm from the Board of Education. Put it on. All right, Heidi Campbell. Beth Engel. Mike Baronowski. Yes, you gotta wear it, wherever you, wherever you want it. Tim Isakowski. Last but not least, Sharon Stoltner. And the, our kindergarten students also made them, and those are the, those are prizes. I don't know if you saw them, so they made you a little thank you note, so. All right, thank you. Anybody that, you're certainly welcome to see, we have three dynamic presentations this evening. It will only be a half hour, so you're welcome to stay for that, or if you have somewhere you need to go. Okay. Oh, for the recognition? Okay.
Hi, I'm Jacob Swett, and this is Dahlia Boyer and Danielle Demodle. And on behalf of the Elginak High School Student Council, we are here to thank you for your service to Elginak Community Schools. We are presenting each of you with your very own Muskrat Stadium blanket. This Friday night, we will be honoring each of you at halftime during the boys' basketball game, and we would be honored if you could have, you should have received invite, President Jonathan Morton.
No, no, I have one, but it's this guy on TV. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. It's beautiful.
Thank you, parents and football players.
Hey, Student Council. Okay. Tonight, I have a couple of presentations. One is our communication plan, so I'll have Crystal pass that out. And we will spend additional time with this plan, but tonight, I'd like to just basically introduce it and the concept of how it was created. Okay, first of all, on the cover there, and it was something that has, we discussed as a community group at a community meeting, as you know. I believe that's been about three weeks, three weeks ago now. And that is a slogan that encapsulates our district. You'll see many school districts around the state, and I've been a part of it, where we even get, I've been in school districts where we get together for a weekend, go somewhere fancy, have a retreat, and spend six hours talking about a fancy mission statement or slogan. And really, from my experience, I found the slogan is only good as the actions that follow it. And so, you can have the fanciest slogan in the world, but if your actions as a school district don't follow what you're saying with what you're putting out there as your label, then it really doesn't mean much. It's put on the shelf. And if you were to ask anybody in the school district, or even a board member, or superintendent, what is your mission statement? What do you stand for? I would bet you, half of them wouldn't even be able to say what it is, because they did it, it went on the shelf, and I don't want that. And so, and this is just in draft form, but something that I feel encapsulates our school district where we're heading, not only from the consolidation, but future decisions that we're gonna be making on items like pay-to-play and different things of, does what we do match what we're saying? And that is simply this, we are the Elginak Community Schools family. And it's something that you read, you immediately, even your subconscious mind, I actually was watching, I stepped inside an IB classroom today, as I was going class to class in the high school, and that young man gave a presentation today on the subconscious, the power of subconscious and advertising. And so, when Coca-Cola or any company advertises, they have programmed your subconscious mind, whether you know it or not, to think a certain way about a product. And I think that says a lot. It says right away, we are a school family, and our actions are backing that. And so, that's, that's right now, something that we'll take back to our community team and you, as board members. I'd like you to think about that, because once we have that out there, it really be, the actions will be what we stand for. But what I like about that is wherever you are, whether it be in church downtown, at a festival, or wherever you are, if someone asks you, there's nothing fancy about that. What is your mission statement? What do you guys stand for? We are the Elginak Community Schools family. Pretty simple, pretty encapsulating, and it's something we can remember because we stand for. And like I said, you have a copy. I'm not gonna take our time this evening to go through the whole packet. Take a look. It's not something that needs board approval. It's something that is dynamic, we'll change it and make adjustments as we go along. But basically, it's the venues we use to communicate as a school district. We have the parent newsletters, we have union communication, media releases, district staff meetings, staff community updates on a regular basis, as you know. I would like to touch a little bit upon the community part and a couple new concepts. And that is the social media piece. Crystal will be helping me quite a bit with that, because somewhere along the line from being a technology director to today, I became the old man. The old man, when I get my phone out, my kids make fun of me because I'm punching it hard, and I never know how to do anything, and I don't know how to load a program or anything like that. And so, Crystal's gonna help me along the way, but it is our, it is our time now to move forward with how communications does take place. And we wanna make sure we cover the gamma of the different ways in which people receive information. So, in the coming months, you will see a presence for the school district from the school on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, and of course, our website. We're looking at revamping our website and giving that a fresh look as well. Another area that I'd like to proceed with, and it's just, it's been a busy year, you know, we have a lot going on, and so, it's, you know, it's something that I hesitated whether we should move forward on it or not, as we're focused on the consolidation, because that is keeping us busy. But I really wanna highlight our students, like, what we saw tonight, that was awesome. And so, it's something that, for me, goes back, wow, ten years ago now. I had a monthly TV show on Bay City Public Schools, and it was the neatest thing in the world, people did watch it. They really did watch it. And basically, you go into a school, and you feed your department or a program or an athletic team, and you talk to the kids and talk to the teachers. And it's just a really neat thing, because people like to see their children on TV being highlighted. So, that, this is something as well that we're gonna proceed with, and we can come up with a name if you don't like the name, but again, keep it as simple as we, I thought we just called it Muskrat TV, seemed to make sense to me. So, those are a couple of things that you'll see as far as our communication in the future. But the bottom line to all this, and I want you to know, as your superintendent, where I stand in regard to communications, I want you to know still that my focus is gonna be that we run a quality school district. That's my focus in terms of marketing, because a lot of people market, they try to market maybe a product that isn't top-shelf or good quality that they would buy it, but they're still trying to market it. The bottom line is, we will focus on giving the best education we can possibly give with excellent results, and we're simply gonna communicate it. That's marketing, and that's, that's how your district gets a good name in the community and outside the community. So, are there, and again, this is a, this is a fluid document, or I would have gone the procedure of information and approval, but, so it really doesn't need board approval. Are there any general questions or comments?
I think it's great. I like the idea of the Muskrat TV. I like the idea of possibly taking it into the classroom and showing some of the younger kids what the older kids did, and how they got recognized, and I think that'll just promote more and more, you know, of what we're looking for. I like the students.
Because those little kids, like you said, like you were explaining to these students earlier, these younger kids are looking up to these older kids. And, you know, they, they're not here to see that. I mean, they see them, you know, wearing their football uniforms, you know, when Mike's son went into the classroom wearing his football helmet and his uniform to go read to those kids, that was like, you know, like Elvis himself entered the building, you know, I mean, and, I mean, so to, that would expand to see the rest of it, you know? This guy, not only does he get to wear that cool helmet, uniform, or whatever, they also, maybe they got to put ties on and get, got to like, get certificates and shake hands and stuff. I mean, that's, and to little, little kids, those are, those are, that's a huge deal to see those kind of things.
Even more than that, Andy, it's more even an interview with one of those student-athletes of, how did you get to where you are? How did you get this all-state honor? And for the younger students to hear that dialogue, that interview of, here's how I did it, I worked hard, I always had a dream, you know, and that's, that is more powerful than coming from the grownups. You know, that's more powerful that these, the younger students hear from our, from our older students that they look up to out there in the football field, of what it does take to get to that level. And that's how, that's how you build a mindset, a culture, a deep-rooted culture, is the younger students see it modeled and hear about it and understand it. So, hopefully, that accomplishes that task. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, moving on. The monthly budget update. And again, anybody from the community that would like a copy of anything that we're presenting this evening, either after the meeting, you can get a copy, or I can email it to you. But this is, as we, as we work through the budget process, is really just, actually, the board's always got this information, we're just summarizing it in different ways. It's really more for the community, that's why I turned it to community, to see, you know, what is transpiring in terms of the funding. And basically, what you have there is a monthly report that Lori puts together that compares the previous year at the same month, and each line item, so right now, we have revenue. So, we have local. I'll use my new laser pointer right here. Why isn't it showing up up there? Seriously? Seriously?
It'll feel bad, John, I don't see it either.
Yeah.
You can use, you can use a mouse to go on, it'll be like a screen. Their curriculum director. Technology director, yeah.
You have local sources right here, state sources, and then federal sources. And basically, I take the month, the previous budget, and then you have the actual through December, in this case, right here, and then you have the current budget. And what that allows me to do with these percentages at the, over here at the far right, it allows me to see what our percentage of revenue, in this case, a year ago compared to this year. So, it allows me to make sure that we're consistent in our, in this case, receiving revenue where we were last year at the same time, and that allows us to monitor our budget. And you can see then, then at the, under the revenues, that with local sources, we were at eighty-one-point-two-seven percent. This year, we're at eighty-four-point-five-eight. State sources, we were at twenty-six-point-four-two. This year, we're at twenty-six-point-seven-nine. And then, federal sources, we were at twenty-six-point-six-five. This year, and I have it highlighted, we're only at seven-point-nine-four. So, that's an example where, okay. What's going on here? That number varies quite a bit, and in that case, Lori is...
And in that case, I did not request some federal funds. I requested them this month. Since I was out a lot in December, I just, I just didn't get to request them, but there's no deadline to request federal funds, you can request them whenever you would like to request them. So, I have requested like a hundred-and-eighty thousand, I just requested, so.
So, yeah, so it allows Lori to look into and see that indeed, we will receive that money, it's the same amount of money, and we're able to monitor that. Expenditures down below here, so you can see on the side here, the different expenditure areas, and then the percentages. So, again, going down through that quickly, and I won't do this every month, but again, just make sure we all understand the process. For instruction, the expenditures last year at this time were thirty-three-point-eight-zero, this year at thirty-three-point-four-four. Added needs, thirty-four-point-oh-three, we're at thirty-three-point-four-nine, and so on and so on. So, you can see that it has some highlighted areas. For example, general administration, last year at this time, our expenditure was forty-point-nine-three. This year, it's forty-six-point-four-one, and again, that's the difference between interim superintendent last year and then me this year, so that's an adjustment next month when we do our budget revision that will make. And it was an anticipated adjustment. Transportation is another area. Last year, we were at twenty, at this time, twenty-four-point-eight-zero. This year was sixteen-point-six-six. So, again, get up out of my chair, go to Lori's office and say, hey, this is a pretty large variance here, what's going on? And Lori was able to look at it and basically see that we haven't been invoiced, or we weren't invoiced, or it was later for being...
It's their routes, they always sometimes lag behind on billing for their routes, and in this case, that didn't make the December bill we paid them in. Actually, I don't think they've billed for January yet.
So, which is...
They're behind, and in my mind, I could bother them for invoices, but...
It's our advantage, because it's money we're not spending, it's interest that we're earning, so again, it's, it's something we should be aware of, something that I know month to month, but, you know, certainly, I'd rather have the money in the bank to be quite honest with you. So, and then the last area that I highlighted, and that, again, that has to do with, Lori reminded me on that, on the custody and care of children, we're at forty-one-point-two-five. This year, we're fifty-three-point-nine-seven.
It has to do with our labor costs are up, but our revenues offset that. Our toddler room is full. Kellie has rooms that are full, and some waiting, some waiting, less for those rooms, so that will come to that. But it also is offset by local revenue, as you see that the local revenue is up a little bit too, so those two offset each other.
Have enough room to open up another room to accommodate those waiting?
No, because they have special licensing requirements, and they're full. All of the rooms over there are full.
Okay, the last section of the update is...
John, before you uncheck it, I just wanna make one comment on this, this document. Like John said, this is a document that we get every month, and it's a very useful document to do just that, compare this year to last year. But what you don't wanna do with this document is take a look at where we're at, revenues less expenses, we're sitting at four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars of surplus, if you will, six months into our budget. By no means is that an accurate picture of where we're actually gonna be at at the end of the year, so that's what's... One thing is, is what I'm pointing out with this document, that I don't particularly, I, it's hard for me to look at that and say, well, that's not right. So, I mean, I, not that it's not right, it's the accrual basis versus modified accrual, I get that. But to look at that and just make a projection off of that, that would be, uh, a wrong, wrong analysis.
This is the tool to help us get along month to month, but it's not certainly something that's gonna be, we can talk about and say there's extra money.
Yeah, and, and basically the, the bottom part, the bottom section, it's gonna be pretty much stay consistent until we do actually do a budget revision. But, but to your point, uh, you're saying that there's more funding available?
No, this, this report is reading that we have excess revenue, the expenses of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So if you look at six months into it and say, okay, let's train that, we're gonna have a million dollar surplus. That's not gonna happen.
Right.
It's gonna be opposite where.
Right.
Okay, this way, everybody be clear on that.
And, and, and so the second part of this update on the back of your, uh, sheet here. This is gonna stay consistent up until we do a budget revision. And, uh, basically you can see that, uh, in July, our budget, uh, we were at about one percent projected fund equity at the end of the year, which is a deficit of about one point four million dollars that we still carry over. Uh, but we did make an adjustment in October, and we're projecting right now to have roughly, uh, five hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, but still it's a one point four million dollar deficit. Uh, we do anticipate having a little more than that, but, but at this point, we're gonna do a revision next month. I'm gonna remain conservative, uh, with that, with that amount. Pretty much stay, you know, I mean, we're gonna do a revision, but we're gonna go line to line, line by line, but I still, you know, there's still a lot there that maybe I wouldn't be able to anticipate. And so, I guess what I'm saying, long story short, is that I do anticipate a higher ending fund balance that, than is indicated here, but, uh, uh, in my career, I have not gone wrong by being conservative with that number, uh, you know, as we look to next year, so... Uh, though that number will change when we do a budget, uh, revision. And now that we have the consolidation plan passed, Lori and I are gonna sit down and begin next year's budget, once that budget is, draft budget is developed, then we're gonna do the three-year pro forma, uh, as we project three years out. But I really wanted to see how the consolidation plan was gonna go, because that's an eight hundred thousand to a million dollar swing. And so, uh, we are going to do that. So any questions, uh, about the budget update? This will be monthly, and it will usually go a little bit quicker than, uh, than now as we're, uh, working through this process.
John, um, if the income tax increase passes in May, how does that help our schools? Does, any, anything that come back to...
You know, Lori just got back from a conference, so I'm sure she's more up to date on that than I am.
You, we would like to think that we would get, even with the surplus and the state aid right now, um, additional money from the schools, but the general fund has a negative balance right now, and with that new, um, sales tax, they're gonna move the universities back to general fund, but they're gonna move all of the community college scholarships and put CTE also in state aid, so they're not really sure how much money he's gonna be drawing more from the state aid fund. Um, it's a fiscal, um, the Senate Fiscal Agency talked to us and told us the budget level, because she doesn't know that he's not gonna... Right now we're getting one-time funding for MSbers, it was supposed to be one year. We're like in our third year for it, she's thinking that he might cut that. And, um, there's some other transfers that the general fund gives to the state aid, the proposal A, and it's been cut every year, and because of their deficit, she's thinking that he might pull back some of that money, so... February eleventh is gonna be his budget, so we'll know a little more then.
But I, again, I'll, uh, and you'll find this with, you know, I know this is our first year through together as a board and superintendent, uh, you know, and, uh, you know, the, I work with the associations as well, as we all get to know each other, but I will always lean to the conservative side of whatever numbers I'm given. Uh, because again, I've never gone, ever gone wrong by being conservative on a number, so if I'm given a number that you're gonna get a state increase from anywhere from zero to two hundred dollars per student, I'm gonna budget it zero. And good for us, the day comes in at one hundred or two hundred additional per student. So, uh, I'll be consistent that way, there'll be some critics with that, but, uh, at the end of the day, that, uh, I, you know, I think it'd be hard for us at the point where our budget is the same way to have too much money in the bank. You know, I think, I think it's a point where we need to raise our fund equity certainly for more of this, so... Any other questions? Uh, quick consolidat-, I know you get this in your monthly update, and the community does as well, and so I'll, I'll, I'll make this as quick as possible, but I just want to, uh, make sure you know where we are on the consolidation plan. Uh, Bill Foster is, did decide that he would come on and help us, and he's certainly gonna be a blessing, uh, because he knows this district, uh, well. Forty-seven, I don't know how many years, forty-eight? Forty-eight years in the district, so. I'm forty-eight years old, so he, he's been in this district as old as I am, that's, that's, that's incredible, so. He has a lot of experience, I appreciate that, he's helping us out quite a bit. So where we are with the personnel, uh, first and foremost, uh, and we're gonna have discussions on that, uh, this evening, and that is moving forward with the principal administrative layoffs and the principal assignments, that needs to be done immediately. I need those people in place, be able to name them, so we can move forward on almost everything else. And so, uh, that, that's something that, uh, you can see is January, it is gonna go into February a little bit, uh, per recommendation from, from our attorney as far as making sure we're, uh, crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is as we move forward. Uh, and just so you know, that and staff layoffs, uh, while I present it in a very dry, formative, uh, way, as you get to know me better, uh, that's, that's hard on me. Uh, there's nothing, I build a relationship with people, it's my style. I do get close to people as I work with them as a team, and so, I want you to know, just 'cause I'm presenting it in a dry fashion here, it's, it's something that, uh, does wear on me, and I, I don't take it lightly, but it's something, uh, necessary, it's part of our consolidation plan. So the, uh, actual, uh, teaching staff layoffs, again, just to review with you, uh, really cannot transpire to all the way into May, and that is simply because, um, they're based on evaluation. The offs are based upon evaluation, so we have to wait till the final evaluations come in, and then April to move forward on that. We may move forward with our alignment of, uh, support staff, uh, here in March, uh, but, uh, and maintenance staff, uh, but the teachers will have to wait. Ryan has begun the scheduling process, because a lot of what teachers and teaching assignments, uh, uh, we need will be based upon the schedule. So Ryan has begun that process. Construction, uh, really, we've done all the planning we can, we'll continue to, but really, construction will not. We can do some construction in some of the areas, uh, but primarily, of course, construction will be the day those kids leave. Uh, we'll be, uh, getting on, right on top of that. Transition and move, that's where Bill's helping us quite a bit. Uh, each day that I work with him, he gets another task. For example, we have a meeting every Friday with our team, uh, one of our teams that is, is working on this transition, and, uh, we, every time we find something, for example, uh, our library systems. We're bringing these libraries together, so that's something that, uh, Bill's gonna help us on, for example, in the transition and move. But we wanna have that very organized. We're gonna be very structured when it comes to that, again, when those students are out, we're gonna, we're gonna move in and begin to move, and make sure the buildings are clean and ready to go. Technology oven is, is right on top of that, I, I really don't have any concerns with the technology, and it's gonna be ongoing all the way into next school year. Uh, I'm gonna work with the building principals, and even you, Board of Education members, I may call you time to time and say, hey, I'm going out to your area, to this school, and, and see if you wanna come along with me, just so you can hear as board members of the kind of communication that's taking place. I'm personally gonna meet with each classroom and all the students, uh, on that transition. I know the principals are already working together, setting up, uh, uh, field trips and visitations and so on, so the kids, the students are comfortable. I wanna really make sure those students are comfortable with their new environment, and not only comfortable, but excited. Uh, at the end of the school year, uh, we're looking at having some, uh, we're having actually coaches classes, putting together a T-shirt design force that has all the logos, that go into the Algenac A with a muskrat right in the middle, and then we are the Algenac Community School family on the, on the back or front, however we decide that. And I would like, one day, where all students in the district and all staff come out to the football field, and I'll let you know certainly, uh, and have a picture with our whole school family. And so, that's a lot of work, and I already am thanking the principals for that, I know there's a lot of logistics, uh, to that, but I think that's gonna be a historic time for our district, uh, as we come together, really getting to... I don't want the kids to, I don't want them to not only have fear, but I want them to be excited about this. And so hopefully we can create some excitement with that, and I'll keep you informed. Alternative school, uh, we are looking at bringing that under our auspice. I'll keep you not only informed, but that will be a, something that will come to you as an information item, then an approval item. So I won't spring that on you, I'll keep you informed as we have information. I really haven't had the time to debrief Dave this evening, and Gene was at the meeting as well. Uh, so they were at the, uh, meeting with the Alternative School, Woodwater Learning Academy, so I'll keep you informed on that, uh, via communication with you as board members. We are looking at doing a feasibility study for a daycare latchkey program out at Fair Haven, uh, but we really wanna gather our data first, before we do that, and make sure we have, uh, all the data we need, that you need as Board of Education to make a decision. Uh, but it, it was not only a commitment I made to the parents in Fair Haven, it was a very deep, authentic commitment of putting my parent cap on. I'm working in Detroit, now, now I'm driving all the way into, uh, have to go all the way into Algenac to drop my, my child off and then come back and pick them up. If there is a need for them, we have enough people, why think how much more convenient that would be for parents to drop them off there at the store? At six-thirty AM, but everything's taken care of, the bus picks them up and brings them in, and then the same thing in the evening. So, uh, we are gonna look at, uh, latchkey slash possibly daycare depending on the need, and, uh, Bill Foster is, uh, looking at having a feasibility study done on that immediately. Real estate, uh, Lori's gonna be our, uh, administrator, uh, responsible for that, working with Bill. And I'm just being very, uh, very, uh, careful, uh, of how we select a real estate agent, uh, because I know we have a lot of very good people in town, and so we're gonna come up with some process, uh, of how we select that real estate agency. And so that's the first thing we need to do, and then, again, it will come to us with the board numbers. And so I'm just letting you know that we are at the beginning stages of that. Transportation, uh, we want, Dean, transportation is having to do a whole reroute, and right now I have some, uh, very, uh, draft plans of how I want to involve our staff a little bit on developing that plan of the new transportation routes. Uh, because again, my goal is to, to bring us together and make sure it's, it's something that we all, uh, had some input on, so I'll, I'll, I'll let you know about that, uh, as, as we move forward. So, quite a bit taking place, I appreciate you time, I know you read it anyway, uh, but I really wanna take, take advantage of the monthly time we get together, uh, to make sure everyone's on the same page as by it all, as we move forward, so... Any questions?
Consent agenda.
I'd like to abstain from voting on the consent agenda due to a possible, impossible conflict of interest.
Okay, so noted. We still need a, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion, Board of Education approves all consent agenda items, including agenda minutes, personnel items, treasures, report, and bills as listed items A through C.
Been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention. Information items, evaluation of the superintendent. Everybody should have a copy of the, of the, of the instrument in front of you. And we wanna have those, uh, filled out and returned to Sharon by February ninth. Um, just to go through, um, the objections of the past, which most of us have had. Um, for a bunch of years, we've all hated the form, and we thought we should have, huh? Yeah, still do, and we should have a new form. Um, when we began the process, I think it was in eleven, to evaluate, it was said we need to have a different form by, for next year, and that's when the legislature and the Department of Education, or whoever the, uh, wizards in charge of that were at the time, said we're coming up with something for adminis-, teachers and for administrators, and your superintendent, one will go off of that. So we decided that we would wait, as you'll recall, till that came up, because if we go to all the trouble to make one up and then only to have to turn around and change it and have wasted all that time, and which, so the fine folks at the state have kicked that can down the road a couple more times, and now they're, now they're really working on it, and so here we are again. Um, so it's, uh, still noted that we hate the form, and, um, that it's, uh, subjective. Uh, John has, uh, when, and I talked about this in the summer. Uh, I, I explained to him I had a concern about, uh, what we wanted to do, if, if we wanted to try to figure, you know, something out to, uh, change the form, or if we should try to use something very close to what he had in New Lothrup. And, uh, his response to me was that our form is pretty much like the New Lothrup form, which is pretty much like most of the forms in the state. Um, the only exception has been when the state did pass the, the law that says that the, um, student growth results, which is on their, uh, page eight, question number nineteen, that is a data-driven question that has to be answered by what the data says. So if, if the, uh, if the actual, uh, number of the, of student achievement, um, if, if that number is between eighty-five and ninety-five, well, you have to mark B. If it's ninety-five to a hundred, you have to mark A. So, it's a data-driven question that has to be answered, it's not subjective, so for those of us who hate the form, that kinda helps us, uh, be where we need to be by looking at actual facts and figures, but that's how that question, that particular question has to be answered. So, if the state, uh, wants to kick the can down the road further, we can look at doing something starting in the, in the spring or summer, if you want. I just, when I was talking with John this summer, I wanted, we had a, a brief conversation about it. I didn't wanna wait until, you know, November or December or whatever to say, guess what, we're gonna spring a new form on you. I mean, that's, and which is what we had said about our interim superintendent and our previous superintendent. We didn't wanna spring a new form on anybody, it's not fair to, to the board, and it's not fair to the person being evaluated to do that, so... That's, that's the tricky part of, of, of initiating this process to change the form has been this, this timeline and how far back do you wanna start doing it, and then, you know, that's, that's the history lesson.
Well, the key to that evaluation is, is benchmarking, you know, from year to year, so, uh, a key to any evaluation is consistency. And so New Lothrup, you know, I would benchmark, because we used the same, uh, form for the whole nine years, and I was able to benchmark areas where there was improvement or, or needed to be improvement, or areas where I excelled and maybe didn't need to focus so much more on. And so my point is, if the state is gonna come out with a form anyway, let's wait and see what that is, instead of coming up with the new form now, and then the state comes up with one, because then, uh, there's no way to benchmark. Um, so that, that was my point, where, you know, whether it's a good pro-, uh, form or format or not, it's, it is pretty close to, it's pretty common.
I appreciate that we're, we're, wait for the state, I get that piece of it, but I guess my question would be, how long, are we gonna wait for the state?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, see, that, that...
I mean, because I think this is by far the worst evaluation I've ever seen in my entire life. I mean, I would not wanna be evaluated this way. I, I want to know.
Yeah.
I want to, I want measurement.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
So...
So, so what, this, this...
I mean, because we said that before.
Right, well, and this has been the bugaboo, and you were, you were the one who answered a couple of questions and then wrote the letter, which was, which was awesome, all right? It boils down to, ye- yes, how long do we wait? That's, that's the, that's the bugaboo in the whole deal, is how do you know, because the fine folks in Lansing are going to do things at the pace they're going to do them at, and not, with not really a whole lot of regard about what we think about it, so...
I'd say let's give them at least a year, I mean, it, you know, that's one of the top agenda items, and so, I mean, I'm, I would think soon, but they've been saying that since two thousand and eleven.
Right.
So...
You know, this is not the perfect form by any means, however, we do seem to be able to get our point across when we're doing the evaluation, so I don't think we leave you kind of wondering or in the lurch.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so it, but it could, it, it should be changed, and I agree that... And I agree that waiting for the state to finally do something.
It's one of the top three priorities, so I.
I'd rather concentrate on consolidating versus this.
We need to.
So that's, if anybody has any questions about that, please let me know or let Sharon know. And, and let's get those into her. You can bring them here because Sharon's here at least a couple of times a week and we can make sure she gets them.
You can drop them off, mail, email them or drop them off here.
Or just give them to me. I'll make sure she gets them.
But make sure they're sealed.
I'll make sure they're right before she gets them.
The elementary camps, you want to talk about that?
Really, it's as described.
I mean, we've done this for.
Pretty basic on that. On B and, and C, it's pretty basic. And I don't know, Tammy and Brooke are here. I mean, it's, the, the fifth grade camp is, is an annual event.
Annual event.
Yeah.
Now, is, is, is this camp, is this, this opportunity that, that these kids go to? Is there, I mean, they have this on, on two different batches. Is there a way that our, we have two sixes? Is there a way where our entire fifth grade is going to be able to all go to one place at one time?
It depends on the reservations and the time. It certainly depends.
Because last year they did that.
That's all, yeah.
What's that?
We got invited to New Lothrup to do that camp.
Didn't they, last year, went together?
We all went together. It just depends on the time is, who is there before us and who registers before us. So, and to be real honest with the state testing, that's going to put a kink in it too. Because we registered before, I think before we left camp last year. And now the state testing is interfering again. So we'll just kind of, well, we'll have to see.
Cool. Thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity.
And the, the pictures and the descriptions that have come back to us from the teachers and the people, the students that have gone have been pretty interesting. And the displays of everything that's been happening through social media has been, especially when it's rainy and muddy, those are interesting pictures. Administrative reports.
Ryan?
Well, just finished our first semester. Got off exams last week. Starting this week, we have our snow coming week, so we started with our teams today. Tonight, they're actually having the powder puff volleyball going on at the high school right now. We have that going on this week. We're just kind of getting ready here as the, the testing's coming up soon for the high school for the juniors. Again, they, it's kind of changed this year, so there's actually two different sessions. We have a, one in March, the A.C.T. that they're used to taking. But then also, we come back to the spring break that week, we have the Michigan section, the M-step there. Then again, we're doing the paper and pencil version, but we do have some additional released sample of questions that I know the teachers have already gone in and the professional development, they've already looked at and seen what they're going to be taking. And they're going to be taking the kids in the computer lab and kind of looking at it on the computers. They've also released their, for the first time, they have to do a classroom activity that's followed up by a performance task for, for English and math. So we'll be working on that as well. And that's pretty much for the high school.
Go ahead, Mitch.
Just a couple of things. Time Serrel ranks wrestlers in the surrounding Bluewater area. We currently have seven wrestlers that are ranked. Casey Pruitt is sixth in one oh three weight class. Andre Gourier is first in one twenty-five. Josh Poole, third in one thirty. Nick Fredericks is fourth in the one thirty-five weight class. Kaden Luiz, sixth in one sixty. Nick Sanford is first in one seventy-one. Robert Jewell is third in one eighty-nine. Another good thing, the competitive cheer team barring injury and sickness continue just to get better and better each week. And they won their invitational at Lakeshore this past weekend, the Shoreyan Invitational. And the last thing that I forgot to mention about the football boys is that there are eight divisions in football and our GPA would have, we would have ranked top four in, in four of the eight divisions. So.
Very good.
How are we doing on the bowling team for next year?
This year.
This year?
It's going well.
They're, they're doing really well. They are, the last, I didn't get a chance to ask the boys before they took off. There's a couple of them bowl, but they were one oh and one in the B-wax. So they won one and tied one in the B-wax. And one of the teams, the team that they tied are made of, was tenth in the state last year. So they are doing very well for a first-year program.
And I tell you, there's, and Mitch, you know, I've been to a couple of the matches and Mitch has been there. And so thanks for bringing that up. There's a lot of, I want you to know as Board of Ed, there's a lot of appreciation for a group of students that wasn't necessarily in other activities. And so it's, it's really neat going. If you get a chance on that schedule, just go by there. People really, they really appreciate it. It's, it's really reached a contingency of students. It's neat to see. Abe?
A couple of things from Algonquin. We have our Friday. We spent the last two weeks raising money for the American Heart Association. We do something a little different that started a couple of years ago. We don't do Jump Rope for Heart, but we do our rat-out game. Two years ago, it was a staff versus students basketball game. Last year was a volleyball game. This year, we're back to a basketball game. So that's Friday. And we raised over five hundred dollars for American Heart Association. Our kids are really excited. We'll have that game Friday. We made the mistake of asking Dr. Stricker to officiate the game, which he promised the kids will win.
Well, I asked you, you said the staff win. They beat up on these little kids. So yes, yes, you watch out for my calls.
Five minutes at a time between breaks and using the defibrillator.
Heads up.
Right.
So the second thing is, we have begun, this is even shared by Ryan, so you've been a huge part of this. Is tomorrow, myself and three of my staff will be heading over to the high school to begin discussions about transitioning our students. If you think about it, you'll have every single one of the students that are going to middle school will be in a new school next year. And so we, Ryan, we're going to meet with Mrs. Blair, Ryan, Mr. Lander, begin to talk about. We already have three dates scheduled for orientation for each grade that will be coming over. They have their own day. But Ryan and his staff would like to know more about what else can we be doing. So we'll, we'll, as a group, we'll be able to kind of lay that out. We've had the same conversations going the other way with myself, Mrs. Hanners, the elementary level. Kind of what, what is that going to look like? So we'll keep you posted on that. But we're going to start that already tomorrow, so transitioning the kids and thinking about that as we move forward next year.
Are you hearing the excitement from the kids about, about going to the high school, any of them? Or is there trepidation or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very, very interesting, because as you know, Dr. Stricker's around all, you know, in and out of class. And so kids don't feel any type of barrier there with asking himself, you know, what, what is this going to look like, what's going to happen? I think they're very interested to find out which teachers will be there, what their class is going to look like. Will they have the same kind of setup? They will, you know, it, things like the lunchroom was a big question. How is that? Is that a separate lunchroom? That stuff is coming from the parents. That's from the kids. So a lot of it we can answer, some of it we can't. But they are, their interest in how it's going to go, Andy, is more of it than, I wouldn't say concerned at all or kind of frustration or, or anxiety. It's more of a anxious or excited.
Excited, that's good. Good.
And then lastly I have in front, I just want to share this with you. I have a handout for each of you I sent there on student growth percentiles. We had, Mr. Latos was able to share with the administration part of what the new M-step will judge on and that's student growth percentiles. One of the things that we are excited about once we really delve into this, and the information is included there. If you'll read the definition of how the state's going to use it, it's the exact same definition that we've been using our STAR program, which I know I've presented to the board several times. It's one of the things that STAR emphasizes, that student growth percentage. And so we're very excited that we've been looking at this data all along and how the state will begin to look at the same type of data that we have. I included just a report. I apologize. I tried to cross off the names and things and tried with a color copier. But you'll see that yellow highlighted area will give you, now that we've tested the kids in the fall, we just got done with our midterm assessment of the kids with STAR. They'll be able to rank those kids, percentile rank those kids already for us. And we'll get another look at it at the end of the year when we do our STAR testing. So the whole idea is that we are able to see those kids way ahead of the M-step and get them where they need to be, get them help if they need it, whatever else they may need. So we're ready to go once that starts moving back to spring break. So we're, we're excited about it.
Cool.
Thank you.
Melissa could not be here this evening. And if, if you know Melissa's character at all, you know, for her not to be at a board meeting. She's a very hardworking employee, very dedicated to the school. But she wasn't feeling well and I insisted that she stay home and rest. So Tammy has her update as far as for the building level.
She said we look for goals. So as Melissa from Elgin, she says that they have a very successful pig day section, the fifth grade. That, that is always fun to think. She said we had night creatures, family night on Thursday night with over three hundred people.
Excuse me, Tammy?
Sure, what kind?
Tammy, you may need to move up a little bit so the camera.
They can't hear you on the camera.
I'm sorry.
The microphone.
Yeah, you need.
Or you can go to the podium.
Where you go there, yeah.
Well, I'm not sure what kind of night creatures you had.
Bats, flying squirrels, owls and, oh, it wasn't a flying creature. It was a skunk.
A skunk?
Tammy, you may want to stand at the podium so they can.
We, we made a, a lot of jokes about what kind of nocturnal creatures would come out. They will have a spaghetti dinner on Friday for their student council. And on the curriculum side of it, all of the elementary schools have had the consultants from RISA watch animals out to work with our teachers on math, problem solving and model drawing with math. Our students are very good at solving STAR problems and drawing pictures of them. And she will be out again on Wednesday to finish everything up. We also have another curriculum meeting coming on Wednesday of this week and it will be about science. At Fair Haven and at the other elementary schools. The Attorney General of Michigan provides us free cyber safety initiative. We had that two years ago and they are coming back. They will show us videos of how to be safe online, age-appropriate videos. So that's happening this week. We also have a bubblonian presentation sponsored by St. Clair. Thank you. It would have taken me a while to get that out. And that's a very good program too. On the curriculum side for Fair Haven, I have been telling you since fall about our RTI program and the intervention. We finished our assessments for the semester. And my wonderful secretary, who is stuck on Carson's Island, finished graphs for me that shows the progress K through three. So pictorially, I wanted to show you those. You can see that with the help of our intervention, we have made some great progress. Red, as you remember, are the ones that are, you're welcome, are well below benchmark. Below, please don't quote me on these percentages, but I believe they're below nineteen percent top now. The yellow is below forty percent top. Those are the ones we provide the most intense intervention for. And then the green are basically on a grade level. So you can see by the difference in the pie charts there that our intervention program has been extremely successful and the teachers and the personnel that work with that are very proud of that. Oh, unless you have questions on that. I'm done here. Melissa and Tammy.
Nice job. Brooke?
All right, we've been very busy at Millside since we've gotten back from break. We've done progress monitoring, especially Jim Ache's done most of it. And we're in the process of reconfiguring all of our intervention groups and changing up what our kids need. So starting this week, they will have new interventions, new groupings. And we're very happy with their progress and how many kids have actually moved out of our groupings. Our family council has been very busy this month. We've had a movie night that there's probably a hundred and fifty people at. Lego club is every Thursday. And we have so many that we needed to run two days of it now. And high schoolers are coming over to help monitor and build. And they have projects. So they're being master builders and win awards each week. There are also a crafting group that comes once a week. And our science olympiad is really off to a great start. We have well over forty kids this year. And our high school and staff members are coming out and being basically the leaders of the group. And the parents are just the sponsors because we're finding out that the high school students know a lot more about the science stuff that they're doing than the parents. So the kids are excited about it. We're excited to have the high schoolers there also. Our dissection was very interesting also. A lot of parents there. Dr. Stricker also came out to see it.
Yeah.
Real quick.
Yeah, because I, when they start tearing out the esophagus and who wants to see that? Would you, I mean, who wants to see that, right?
That, that'd be, thank you very much.
I started to get a little faint, but.
I was there in spirit.
Yeah. And Scott Thaler's also putting on the Hoops for Heart fundraiser. And though, he's doing it between all three elementaries and now we're going to get together one night and the top winners get to make Sunday out of him. So the kids are really, will be worried about that. So thank you.
Thanks, Brooke. And then Kelly?
I'm probably one of the ones that doesn't really need to come to the microphone. Once you get to know me, you'll see that. My voice carries. I'm really excited to be here. Everybody might not know me, but I'm Kelly Williams. I'm the program director over at Point Trumbull for ABC Child here in preschool. And I'm really, really excited to be a bigger part of the Algonquin Community Schools family. I'm just got an excitement in me to be a bigger part of it. And I think we've got a lot of great things coming. Over at our building, I'm really excited to share that for a long time I've been trying to get a PTO started in our building. And because we're a little bit younger, sometimes things take a while. For some reason, a lot of people are afraid of little kids. And we do four weeks to five, thirteen years old. And I think there's a little, there's always been a little bit of a fear to get a PTO going. But we've got it. We've got our president. It's Becky Bryson. And I'm really excited about that. We have a lot of parents like Mrs. Collins and many more that have said that they're more than willing to help when they can. So it's a great thing. They've already have things set up for our first official thing, event going on. And it's a parent date night. So it's going to take place on Friday, February thirteenth, where they are going to host some care and, and some fun for the kids. So the parents can go out for Valentine's Day on an actual date with no children. So if you want. So I do have some flyers here with more information. We'll have some dinner for the kids and some pizza and some fun activities for them. So it's going to be a fun evening. We are also putting together our, something that we've done every year, but it's called our special persons event. We've usually done it in the daytime, but because we're so full, we can't fit everyone in our rooms. So we're going to have it in the evening. And it's where they can bring in someone from their family with their child, whether it be grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle, cousin. And they're going to come in on Wednesday, February eleventh in the evening and do special activities and different things to show their love for their special person. The teacher's been working hard on that. We also have something planned coming up that we're trying to set up with the state police to come in so that the children don't have a fear of seeing police officers and, and kind of give them a little bit of a talk. And then last but not least, we had a wonderful instructor come from St. Clair County Community Health. And she went individually to each room and spoke to the children about their body and how it's theirs. And it's very important to make sure that they understand that and talking to them about strangers and what's right and wrong about, you know, touching and things like that. And it worked really well. The children had good questions and I think they, they understood about strangers and things. So that's just a few of the things going on in our program. And I just want to open the door. Anybody that wants to come over and do a building tour, you don't have to have children. Come and see what we're all about. So if anyone asks you questions, you have a little bit better of an idea of how we're set up. And if you do have kids, we're right next to the high school. And come and see us. We've got a lot of great things coming in. Little kids will love you. Don't be scared.
Don't be scared.
Thank you.
So the tennis report?
The only other thing I had from the presentations, the drama program is off and running. We've had some very successful meetings. And I tell you, like the bowling, there's a lot of. And I tell you, like the bowling, there's a lot of excitement about it. It's pretty cool. I think it's going to be a big program, so thank you for your support on that and I look forward to seeing what they do with it.
I was at the, the first meeting with the, with the entire group and there were folks from the Algonquin Community Theater, we're here.
It's a good group.
Our choir director and our drama teacher from the high school, we're here. There was a lot of real constructive talk about, you know, how to help these ladies get this thing moving. And the other lady was here, her dad is auditorium director, like at Adrian's Schools or somewhere, and so she's going to be the person, but he's going to come help her set it up and get it figured out and get it going. I mean, these people were all, there was just a fountain of ideas. It was a, it was a very encouraging exchange that, that happened that evening. I was, I was glad to be able to be a part of it. It was, it was very good. I see good things coming from it.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of positive momentum. I mean, the drama instructor from the high school, she was, you know, I'm just, I mean, everybody's like all in, what can I do to help? It's, you know, from every angle of it, it was, it was, this is going to be a good thing.
Yeah, I'm excited about it.
You know?
Thanks.
Yep. Board reports? I was the attendee from Algonquin at the County Association of School Boards meeting, so I was kind of temporarily from Memphis because that's who I sat with, the Memphis Board members. It was a thing about emergency response and there was, and the sheriff was there and the manager of the emergency management for the county, Jeff Friedland, was there and the lady who's the director of the Department of Health was there. And it was a very good exchange of all sorts of information about, you know, the things that those different people and how, how they work together to coordinate responses to not only things that happen at schools, but if something were to happen at a, at an industry or a property near the school, how to help the school deal with any fallout or, you know, vapor releases or any kind of a situation. It was, it was a very good flow of information about, it was a very, pretty informative program, so we got, there's, the, the good news is the, the folks that we have working for us doing those things are, they're on the ball and they, they have, they have good ideas, so, so seems to be money well spent. Anyone else? Visitors and their requests?
None.
None? Overnight trip request for the varsity baseball tournament?
I'll make the motion that the Board of Education improves the overnight trip request for the varsity baseball team to travel to Alpena High School for the bar, for the baseball tournament, it will be made first and second, two thousand and fifteen. The overnight stay and transportation will be provided by the parents and coaches and there will be no cost to the district for the trip. Support?
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Other than the information that was provided in our packet that came from the coach and whoever else put, helped put all that together was very detailed, tons of good stuff. I mean, what a, what a wonderful opportunity. I was, you know, I was glad to see that, that's.
You've traveled with the Truca team the last couple of years in this tournament. It's a nice tournament for the kids. Just hope they get better weather this year than last year.
Right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. I'll make a motion that the Board go into executive session at eight twenty for the purpose of discussing legal issues and negotiations.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote?